Planning Commission meeting to order for Wednesday, June 28th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Excuse the absence.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Christopher Daggy.
There.
Chris Hultunin.
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesling. Here. Kathy Schweikart.
Here, thank you. Item number four is approval amendments to the agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy is absent. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling. Yes. Apologize.
Need a phone.
And Kathy Schweikart.
Yes. Item number five, approval of minutes from June 7th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion to second and discussion. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy is absent. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling. Yes. And Kathy Schweikart.
I abstained, I wasn't here. Thank you. Item number six is new business. We actually have no new business for this evening. So I'm going to move on to item number seven, which is unfinished business, which is a public hearing. But before that, Chris, would you be so kind to read?
Sure. The rules for public comment and public hearing comments. Number one, all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Number two, individuals wishing to speak have time limits. Three minutes for each member of the general public and six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group. Number three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sign-in sheet provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Number four, each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Number five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. And number six, public comment on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item.
Thank you, Chris. Our timekeeper for tonight is Chris Daggy. He will keep track of the time for 3:06. And with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:05. And I would invite Karen, our planner, to come forward and add what she wants to add.
So today we are reviewing a proposed modification to a special land use permit. This use permit was granted to Algonax Sand and Gravel at 3480 Fruit Road. The applicant received approval for this special land use permit back in 2009 for a sand mining operation on a property zone light industrial. The approval included a conditions, one of those conditions prohibited gravel train trucks. In 2020, the township approved an expansion of the operations onto an adjacent property zoned R1, single family. Expansion was approved under the condition that the applicant followed applicable township ordinances and that the applicant provide months and hours of operation. The site plan at that time specified the following. The hours would be limited from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 7:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday. No Sunday or how the hours were specified. Materials to be removed with trucks typical of excavating equipment and a number of others conditions, also including keep out danger signs, noise level shall not exceed 65 decibels at the property line. Hall routes are directed to Fruit Road only. And when mining, operation cease in 8-foot high fence shall be placed around the entire excavation area with appropriate warning signs. For reasons unclarified, the conditions have been modified to the following. Hours of operation were to be from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Saturday. Trucks are limited to single trucks, 5- to 18-yard dump trucks, no gravel trains or double trailers would be permitted. The applicant is requesting modifications to their land use restrictions. The first modification is the operating hours. The applicant is requesting for their hours of operation to be between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays, 8:00 a.m. to noon. Clay mining ordinance limits the hours of operations to be from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 7:00 a.m. to noon on Saturdays. This request is in compliance with the township's current mining ordinance. The applicant is asking to clarify what the definition of operating hours are. The applicant would like to access and maintain their property at times when mining is not active. It is our opinion that the request is reasonable. Other businesses and clay are allowed to occupy during non-business hours. The planning commission may wish to clarify the types of activities that will be undertaken during the non-operating hours. And the third request is to allow the use of gravel train trucks. It is our opinion that these trucks are reasonable and typical for this type of business use. Allowance of gravel trains may reduce the number of trucks on site. Ensuring appropriate restrictions are the responsibility of the St. Clair County Road Commission. Based on the information provided, we recommend approval of the requested modifications to the special land use permit granted to Algonax Sand and Supply.
Thank you, Karen. Christine Anderson is our township attorney. I'll invite her to make any comments regarding this.
Again, one clarification, and that is the way this was noticed was not for the special land use, for amendment to special land use. It was only for review of the soil removal permit. Now, the two do go hand in hand, so it's easy to confuse them. But today's hearing is only with respect to amending the provisions of the soil removal permit, and that's it. If at a later date in time, any modifications of special land use that was previously approved are needed, that will be a separate hearing.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Chris, do you have a question?
I guess, how does that impact us tonight with the, if we're only dealing with one and not both? Can we modify one without the other?
Yes, you can. Because the original special land use, as Karen had said, the hours were greater than what was in the permit. The township board, when they approved the permit, has the authority to modify the hours. So if you grant the revised permit with respect to the hours, the special land use will not need to be amended. The only thing that would need to be amended is if you allow gravel trains, then the special land use will need to be amended. Because the original special land use prohibited the use of gravel trains.
So we can modify hours, but not the truck size coming in?
You can still modify the truck size with the permit. And if you do that, then they will need to come back and request revisions of their special land use.
Which would have to be advertised.
Correct.
Going through the processing. All right.
Correct.
Is there any other limitations in between?
Nope.
Hours staying open with working hours?
Nope, because the special land use approval was for Monday through Friday for whatever crazy hours it were. The township board has the authority, with your recommendation, to add additional hours. They can add Saturday and Sunday hours, they can add holiday hours.
They're already in the window of the hours, though, right? I mean...
Yes, they're within the window of the hours of the original approval, yes.
Could they just operate to those?
No, because the permit that was issued by the township board limited their hours to something different.
All right.
And the board has that authority. They look at, you guys look at just the land use part of it, the board looks at it in a little bit bigger of a picture. So they go with your, they start with your recommendation, then they add a few other things in, and they decide to limit the hours to 4:30. Clear as mud, right?
Yeah, what's the sense of having an ordinance if you can just change it?
I disagree. Any other questions from the board members? Ford, Christine? Now you got us all thinking at the moment.
It's been my week.
It's been your week.
It's been my week.
Okay. With that, I would ask if the applicant's present and if the applicant or their representative would like to add anything. It's not necessary, but you're more than welcome to. You have to come to the podium, state your name, please.
Hello, Sarah Hoover, from Algonax Sand and Supply. I think that there was a little bit of confusion with what we're asking for as far as hours. We would like to go to that original land use, 7 to 6, Monday through Friday, which is in accordance to our original land use permit. And then the Saturday until noon. So that's our request, and we still would like to stay within that original permit. The modification we're looking for on top of that change is to be able to work at our, to do maintenance, do mining, do site work off hours, like most businesses can. As it stands now, we are not allowed to even mow our grass after 4:30. It's unreasonable and very, very difficult to operate a business when we can't conduct any maintenance after hours. Things break, we need to do repairs, we need to do site maintenance, we need to prepare for the next day of work. So that's the, that's what we're looking for as far as those operating hours versus hours of conducting other business. So we would still, we would only be serving our customers from that 7 to 6, like our original permit states. But we would like to be able to do things after hours within a reasonable amount of time. Of course, we're not talking about doing something at 10 o'clock at night or, you know, something ridiculous like that. We just want to be able to conduct our normal maintenance after hours, like any business does.
What were your Saturday hours?
Um, 7 to noon. Yeah. So we're seeking 7 to 6, Monday through Friday, 7 to noon on Saturday.
And nothing Sunday?
No, nothing Sunday, no. And then, like I said, to be able to conduct normal maintenance and business repair for their next day after hours, like most companies do. We need to be able to prepare ourselves and do, do all the different things we have to do to get ready for our day, fix our roads, get sand prepared, truck maintenance, lawn maintenance, general, general things around our property that as of now, we are not authorized to conduct after 4:30.
Thank you.
Yeah. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
There was, there was some complaints. Do you have any?
Sure.
I'm addressing them.
So, so just to address some of the complaints we've had, we've had calls for trucks leaving our yard at 4:37. There's a police report on file for that. I've had calls for leaving my property with a lawnmower on the trailer to take my son to go mowing someone's grass, accused of conducting business. That was personal. I've had pictures taken of me and my children in my yard, just being a family, because I do live at 9034 Field. I live on the other side of that property. I've had complaints, police reports filed for, one of them stated gravel trains spotted on Fruit Road in the police report when I foiaed the records in relation to our property. It was filed under our address. They may have been coming from our yard, but that is a legal truck route. Gravel trains are authorized to drive on Fruit Road. So there's been a lot of police reports, and I know that can be intimidating and make it look like devious in some way, but those, those are, the majority of them were those type of complaints. So nothing, nothing overly exciting. Complaints, one police report stated that complaint was called that we were operating, I think it was 4:40 in the afternoon, and the officer's note says, could not hear machinery, located machinery, you know, found us and it was running. So it wasn't a noise issue, it was a visualization of someone seeing a machine running at 4:40 in the afternoon. I've had family members on site have the police come ask them what they're doing there at 4:45, sit in their vehicle. So, so we are trying to be compliant, but some of these complaints are a little over the top. You know, we want to be compliant, we want to serve our customers, we want to serve the community. We provide a resource that is in demand worldwide and in demand in our area. We're the only septic sand provider. We haul to all the new construction homes, we haul to the water, they're putting new water pipes in on Gulfview and Algonax. We're providing the sand for that. You cannot install those things without our services. The next nearest sand pits is Jettow or Richmond, which would greatly increase the cost of any of these projects, because trucking right now is very expensive, as we know, diesel fuel is very expensive. So we're just trying to provide a needed service in our community, and we're not looking for anything unreasonable. We would like to work with the township and be respectful of the township, but 7 to 6 o'clock would let us serve our customers, and being able to do site maintenance after hours would, would make it so we can serve our customers. So, anything else I can answer?
Yeah, there was an issue with the water usage and the running into the sewage, and you guys mitigated that.
Oh, sure. So we do have a permit with the DEQ for water discharge. Most of our water does not leave the site. There's actually a blockade on our ditch right now. It can be opened. We are in complete compliance with the DEQ water discharge permit. We have reporting that we have to do. They come out and inspect us. We try to keep as much water on site as possible by moving it to our different ponds, which we don't have to do necessarily based on our DEQ standing with, with that permit, but we do do that. We will work with the township anytime they need us to stop water flow. That's not an issue at all. But that is part of a mining operation. That's a general, a function that's necessary, is to move water when you're mining. Is that, is that what you're?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we do move water. We have pumps and we move water, and we work with the DEQ to be in compliance with that. We're 100% compliant with our, with our water discharge.
How about the dust?
Last week, I actually had, I have his name in my pocket. I had the Environmental, Department of Environmental Quality from the state of Michigan out. They came and did a random inspection, and I'm happy to pass this man's information on to anyone who would like it. He had a, someone complained anonymously that there was a dust problem. He came out to see us. We control our dust with sprinkler systems whenever necessary. And the day he came out, it was actually very, very dry. It was one of those hot days, I think it was like two, week and a half ago, 10 days ago. And he was very pleased with our dust control. He said we are completely in compliance. What the state of Michigan was looking at is dust leaving the property. So we're, according to this gentleman, we're allowed to create dust on our property, but we can't inhibit, you know, surrounding areas. So we do have the dust control on Fruit Road. We're moving our dust control system inland more to help keep the dust down, which is just to, you know, it makes it nicer for us, frankly. But it does not, the dust doesn't leave our site. We have tree lines and we have dust control near the road. So the state of Michigan was very pleased with our dust control methods. We have not had any calls from the township in the last, it's been about a year. I know last year we had one, and that was right about the time we put the sprinklers in. But since then, we have not had any dust control complaints that I'm aware of. I have not gotten a letter from Gary about it, and that's usually where they come from. So I think the township's unpleased with our dust control methods, and the state of Michigan's pleased with it. And like I said, if anyone would like that gentleman's information, you're welcome to have it. I will pass it along to you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions at the moment?
There were some comments about not having proper signage and fencing up.
We do have fencing around the property, and we do have signage. Gary comes out and inspects us yearly. He did come this year. We were not given any sort of violation or letter or concern. We were told that we were in compliance at the time of inspection. We did have a piece of fence break. It was repaired with the piece, the piece that broke was picked up off the ground, it was put back, it was fixed to the same standard that it fell. You know, it wasn't changed. And for the two years that I have been involved, Gary has come out, and this year also Roman, the ordinance officer, and they check our whole property, they drive around, they see all the acreage there and have never given us any violation or letter or concern about our fencing, so, or signage. So if there was an issue, we would happily work with them, but we have not been cited at all for that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the audience who would like to come forward and please state your name at the podium? I would say your address, or if you're representing a group.
Good evening. Gary Internetak, attorney on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Thingenberg. They have some video that they'd like you to see in comparison to what the petitioner has said. And I assume that the office gave you my May 22nd, 2023 letter. And in that, I gave you various exhibits as to the, there's two different parcels. One's industrial, the closest to Fruit Road, the other is residential, that a few years ago, Clay Township allowed them to expand into. But those same regulations apply to both pieces. And when you have a mining operation on the industrial piece, that's one thing. Now you expanded into property that's zone residential. So we gave you excerpts from some of the previous township official meetings, including comments from Artie Bryson of the need of the township to protect the residents, not just the operator. And when you look back to the 2009 limitation, there would be limitations, no gravel trains, and limitations on hours of operation. When it's expanded in 2020, it said, once again, the hours of operation were from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to noon. The operation is any part of their business, whether it's land maintenance, truck maintenance, equipment maintenance. That was the idea behind it because of the uniqueness of generally, your ordinance says you have to have 40 acres in an industrial area. This is 40 acres in a residential. So those limitations were in place, not only to protect my clients, but other residents in that area that are on Field Road and that are on Fruit Road, because Fruit Road was the designated truck route to get out to M29. The, when it was renewed, it went back to 2009, 5- to 18-yard trucks, single trailers. Part of their comments were that they haul sand and gravel over to Harson's Island. We know that that's part of Clay Township. The ferry has limitations. I've talked to them. You can only have a tandem axle truck. You can't have a gravel train because the ferry can't take it, and they have weight restrictions. So there's no need, because if it's been operating since 2009 to 2022, 23, and they, and their predecessors live with tandem trucks and semis without gravel trains, there's no reason to change it. When they bought it, if they exercised their due diligence, they would have seen in the public record these limitations. All they want to do is expand their operation, and probably, under your ordinance, you shouldn't have expanded into that residential district. But you have. They also have limitations as to access, because their access out to Fruit Road is by way of easement on somebody else's property. That's restricted to 31 acres, not including the 40. So there's, there's no need to change it, because it was in place for years, those limitations. And if they want to do maintenance or repair work, they can do it between those restricted time hours. And I'd like my client to show you these videos. And we've given you the police reports, the police have been out there, it shows gravel trains. Like I said in my letter, if you're in court, the judge says, you know, do you have clean hands? You want to get some equitable relief. But they've violated it. And then in some of their reports, they say, well, we violated it, but nobody's ever enforced it. Well, the fact that Clay Township didn't give them a citation doesn't give them a reason to expand this operation in a residential area. And I think we gave you plenty of documentation to show what was in place, what's been in place for a long time. 8:00 a.m., there's, that the prior owners, Mark and Sandra Bazzari, signed, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. And that, in essence, was the idea behind it. And since my clients have raised concerns, they've gotten on a bulldozer and bulldozed a lot of the trees that were in close proximity to my client's property that abuts the 40 acres. Well, that changed the landscape, so to speak, and the site plan. They didn't get permission from Clay Township to do that. And we have video of them running the bulldozer to knock down the trees, probably in retaliation because my clients objected to their expansion. But if that's the case, when you look at Artie Bryson's prior comments, he said, if you change things, well, maybe you have to put up the privacy fence and the other things. So if you're going to change anything, you being Clay Township, based on their request, then I think you have to make them submit a new site plan and a request for modification to their special approval land use, and make them put up those signs and the landscaping and the privacy fence between. And I'm taking my time's up, but I'd like my clients, because they have time...
Yes.
...to show you the video.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. I'm, I'm not sure how you propose to show the video, but...
Would you like to say?
Sure, why not?
He's the video operator, not me.
You're not the video operator, okay.
I'm Brian Thingenberg. I live at 9032 Field Road, which is adjacent to the mining operation. And ever since this has expanded into the residential zone, my life has done a complete 180, where it's become unbearable, noise, the dust, it's just endless. And since we've been calling the police, reporting them, working on Sundays and holidays, and we have on record that they've worked holidays, that they've been retaliating against us. And in retaliation, this would have been just this past Sunday night. So they bulldozed the path in front of my house, so now they can get a truck up inside there.
What time? What time was this?
This is at 1:19 in the morning.
In the morning?
In the morning.
And that, what's the date?
This would have been Sunday night.
This past Sunday?
Yeah.
I'm not sure everybody else can see it, so if you want to just walk to the other end and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So, that was the one video.
Oh, were they bulldozing a fence?
So this is the one at 1:00 in the morning. The first one was at 10:00, they did their first round of intimidation. Basically, they tried to get me to come out of the house.
What are they bulldozing, though?
So...
Trees? What are we doing?
No, they're not bulldozing a fence.
So this is, this is that Sunday night, intimidating me for complaining. And then this is their bulldozing my fence line. Now, my house is about 20 feet from the fence line, and this is about 7:00 at night. This is another retaliatory event. He's also taking his bulldozer, parked it right outside my fence line, and left it there on the way, and intimidation.
Running?
No, not running, but he did park it out there, and that was after he bulldozed down on the tree.
What was he doing the other night on Sunday? Was there someone just driving through there, or were they...
That was another attempted getting me to come out of the house. And then as to their dust, you can see the dust coming over the house, it just covers over my whole house completely. If there was anybody out... If there was anybody out there, it was just a day that the dust wasn't going, or they had done something different, but it's just been nonstop. It covered my house, my cars, everything.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to visit his property, he can show you where the trees have been bulldozed.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the public who'd like to come forward to make a comment regards to this public hearing, please do so. Please state your name and your address.
Sir, Dale Bryans, 9231 Maple Road.
Is it that, sir?
Seen you in a long time.
I'm sorry, can you restate it so she can get your name again, please?
Dale Bryans, B-R-Y-E-A-N-S, 9231 Maple Road.
Thank you.
So I'm on Maple Road, just kind of, I guess it'd be west of that operation. And honestly, we have a nice tree band there, and I've got no problems with their operation at all. You can barely hear anything at all from where we're at. And I just wanted to, you know, not, not everybody's got a complaint here. For me, it's fine. I mean, I have a cottage out on the Snibora, and it was a great place to be able to secure sand, to help all the residents when we had high water. And I think it's a really valuable resource that we don't want to ignore. So it was, you know, I mean, water goes high, water goes low, but we still need it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other member of the audience like to come forward? State your name and address, please.
My name is Fran Sampeer. My address is 3280 North Channel Drive, Harson's Island. And I'm one of the contractors that work out of that pit. For starters, if something happens at that pit's not there, does anybody here have any idea where the next one is? It's five miles west of Richmond, so, which would make it impossible for anybody around here to get dirt out of it at any kind of a reasonable cost. It's the only one around. We need that pit. As simple as that. I don't even really know what else to say, but we, this contracting business like this, we can't work, we can't work on actually eight hours a day either. There's probably not one of these guys out here that do this, ain't doing 10, 12 hours a day. You guys got a plush job, it don't matter if it rains, if there's a storm or anything else. When it gets, when it gets, yeah.
Plush job part of the rest of our hour.
Basically, a bunch of tourists, and when it gets cold, they all leave. We don't work in the winter. I don't do 25% of the work I do in the winter, as we do all year. So I think we should have some kind of leniency for a couple more hours a day to work out of this pit. You're closing at 4:30, there's still four hours of daylight left. What are we, can't use it? We need that pit bad. There's not another one around.
Well, appreciate your comments. Definitely taken into consideration. Thank you. Any other members of the audience like to come forward? One more call. Anybody else in the audience like to come forward, state an opinion? No? All right. I'll close the public hearing at 7:37. Any board members, questions, comments? Christine, do you have any further comments to make?
Only that some of the complaints are enforcement issues, and that is over and above what's being done here tonight. Any enforcement issues will be handled by the Township administrative staff.
Could you restate for us, just so we're very clear, and the audience is very clear, what we are trying to decide tonight? Because I know it's a little convoluted, and we've had a lot of documentation over the last couple of months.
Yep. Tonight is only a review of the soil removal permit.
Which is contained in our packet. And last one was dated May 18th, 2020? Is that what one we're referring to?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
And they want to revise those terms. And the planning commission, you make your decision, and then you recommend to the Township Board on whether or not those terms should be revised. The Township Board will make the final decision. And based on the Township Board's final decision, there may or may not need to be some amendments to special land use.
So we could recommend to the Township Board to approve the permit as it stands. And then the Township Board can decide whether they would like to extend the hours, allow gravel trains, deal with the enforcement issues-
Correct.
-and that type of thing as a package deal. So, you know, if we decided that the way that the permit is standing, we're okay with recommending just renewing the permit.
Correct.
Okay.
Is what their consultants recommending within the scope of what you're just discussed, just talked about?
Steve's recommendation?
Yeah.
Yes.
Excuse me. Can I get the Township-
You need to ask your question to the-
Are we allowed to ask her, are we allowed to ask her clarification for what she just said?
What, what's your need clarification on?
She just said that you're looking at a 2020 permit, and you can not address any of these things, basically. We paid $1,000 to put this before the board, and we're told that we had to go through and have these three items addressed. The only three items that we were supposed to be addressing is the hours of operation, clarify what the hours of operation mean, and gravel trains.
And we were told the trustees-
If she's saying, if Chris, I believe is the one who brought up, well, we can just approve it the way it is, why did we pay $1,000 to have you look at this? And we met with city planner, and we went through and jumped through all the hoops, if the board doesn't address any of this? If we just could have gone to the-
Trustees.
Trustees, this should have been done months ago. I don't, I don't understand what's happening.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to state your name for the record, so she-
My name is Richard Hobbit.
Thank you very much. Chris?
If I may, the planning commission is a recommending body.
Correct.
They make their recommendation based on everything they hear here tonight and everything they've been given. The Township Board then takes that recommendation, either goes with it, doesn't go with it, makes some changes to it.
But if they don't address these three items, what does, what does the Township Board have to go on?
They're going to go on the recommendation and everything that is presented. Like I said, this planning commission primarily deals with land use. The Township Board deals with land use plus everything else. Their view is a little more expansive than just land use. But they want a recommendation from a land use experts first, because first and foremost, this is a land use, it don't impact adjacent properties.
Okay, well, so these three items, we thought we were in the wrong spot to start with, and it sounds like we are, because this board isn't looking at that, from what you're saying. They can, they could go forward and not address these things.
They're very much looking at them, but they're going to make a recommendation to the Township Board.
I see.
It may do, may include one of them, two of them, none of them.
So they don't have to make a recommendation, but they can? Is that what you're saying?
No, they do have to make a recommendation, but it may not be exactly what you want, it may not be exactly what the property owners want, but they will make a recommendation.
That's what we're asking.
That was where we were unclear.
No, his question was whether or not they have to grant it.
Oh, no, no, no. We weren't, no, I wasn't on that page.
No, we just, we're confused. We thought, you meant you didn't have to address it? Thank you.
No, sorry. Going to address it, but it may not be exactly what you want, it may be a modification, or maybe more than what you want, you know?
Sure. No, I did, we were just confused, sorry. We were just confused.
Thank you for helping clarify that.
No problem. And that can have a week, for sure.
We don't know a lot about this government stuff, so thank you.
And we don't know a lot about mine.
Sure.
That's okay. Any further questions? Board members?
I have a calendar left to make.
Public hearing's already closed, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry.
So part of the, this is to property owners, part of what you want the hours quote-unquote extended for is so you can maintain, perform maintenance and upkeep to your property and equipment. And then you said mining along with that. Mining's not upkeep. It's, that's part, I'm going to guess is part of the limitations of why your hours were put on there. Mining is not a quiet-
It actually is. It actually, we've invited the fire department out, we've invited the building inspector out, but we've had the building inspector out, we had one of your people on your planning commission out. The noise at the, at the fence lines for every house is way, 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 way less than me cutting my grass behind my house.
So I, is, it was referred to that we all have cushy jobs. I'm in the business, I'm in the trades. I build houses. I have bulldozers, skisters. The older equipment, yeah, it was a lot louder than the newer stuff.
We have all new stuff.
So I get that. It's not loud, but as far as going and mowing your grass, a bulldozer is going to be more decibels than a lawnmower.
I, I would, I would have liked to have the planning commission come out so they could see what is going on. If you take a dozer or an excavator and put it in a pit and mine, that noise stays in the pit. We had noise complaints from the neighbors, the police came out, they couldn't even find us. When they finally did find us, they said they couldn't hear the equipment, they saw the boom moving. So, and they drove right up to us.
Because we're in a hole.
So, I mean, there's-
Well, and then at that point, the sound waves are going up.
Right, and that's, and that's the mining that we need to do. We can't, we cannot do what we have to do in an eight-hour day. There's just no way.
Well, trust me, I get it.
Yeah, I mean-
But, I mean, that's, but performing maintenance on equipment and doing general maintenance-
There were several items that, we're not saying this is-
To your property is a little bit different than running the mining operation.
No, but the, the mining is something that has to take place. I mean, if we can't mine the material, we can't provide it to our customers.
I understand that.
Well, okay, so if you're a contractor, you also understand there's only so much equipment to go around, and so many operators to go around, and so many hours in a day. And you can't be doing-
And I had, and I have to deal with items like you're speaking of when I go into a city. I do a lot of work out in West Bloomfield in the higher-end cities. And when you go there, and you go outside, if you're performing tasks outside, their noise ordinance is 8:00 AM, and by some of the cities I've worked at, 5:00 AM or 5:00 PM, 6:00 PM, you have to shut down any outdoor work. So I, I get it.
And thankfully, Algonquin aren't like that.
So I, like I said, I get it. And when you're trying to get-
You can't target one business and say, you know, I'm sorry, you people can't work, but-
They're building houses.
They're building a house next door. We literally shut our backup alarms off to make sure we don't bother the neighbors. We've done, we've gone over and above to try and make things as nice as we can for everybody. And you don't have 30 people that live around us if you're complaining. You have one person that built a house four years ago in a sand pit, literally in a pit. So they knew the mining operation was there, they chose to build a house there. We, we said, hey, if it's this miserable, if you'd like to sell your house, you know, we'll, we'll look at what we can do. We're trying our best to appease everyone, and you have to have a reasonable solution for everything. So we've tried to show as many of the, the people that will come out, I mean, we've had the ordinance officer out, we've had the building inspector out, we've had the fire chief out, we've had the police out on multiple occasions, had them listen to it. We've had Tom Cozel came out and took a tour because he wanted to understand where the problems were. You know, the-
We invite you all.
You know, everybody was invited to come out, and I don't know how to appease everyone. I mean, we're doing the very best we can, but to hogtie us, you know, the comment was made that these people agreed not to use gravel trains. Well, if you go in the records, these people owned gravel trains and ran them out of there for years and years and years. So, so that, that argument is, is just ridiculous. The, the amount of material, someone said we only go to Harson's Island. That's a very small percentage of my business. For us to get septic sand and stone for the residents of Clay Township, Algonquin, and City, I have to have gravel trains. I have to bring it in. Sometimes my material comes from as far away as, as-
Rockford, West Side.
Calamazoo. You know, we bring specialty stuff in for the septic fields. You know, it, it, it just, it doesn't make any sense to, to try and limit our business where, you know, it cripples us from helping the people of the community.
I appreciate your comments. I see Christine's approached the podium.
Yes, Madam Chair, to build off of Mr. Musling's comment-
Yes.
I would recommend that the planning commission request that the applicant state what type of site maintenance they're talking about-
I agree.
-and what hours, because the term site maintenance is pretty broad-
Correct, yes.
And in the application-
Yes.
-when you included maintenance, you did state mining.
Yes.
So it would be helpful for the commission-
Yes.
-and the audience to know exactly what type of maintenance you're looking to do and what type of hours you're looking at.
So we would like to-
Okay, you need to approach.
Sure.
Just because we're keeping a record.
No, I don't, I get it. I'm sorry. Sarah Hoover, oh, we would like to do things like grading our roads after trucks come in. And after a busy day, it's important to grade our roads. We would like to do fence maintenance. We would like to do tree maintenance. You know, we cut branches, we, we do maintain our, our fence line to make it so we can drive around it. We would like to cut our grass. We would like to fix our equipment, including heavy-duty machinery, as well as light-duty things like trucks. Sometimes in order to fix machinery, you do have to run it. For example, we had to fix an excavator a couple weeks ago, and in order to do that, we had to have the machine running, you know, when we fixed it. And we had to use another machine to move it in order to fix it. That's just part of what we do. The mining, we would like to do after hours. It's important to prepare ourselves for the next day. And I want to explain a little bit how we conduct our business in order to let you understand that. So we have well over a million dollars of machinery. The machines we use are new, they're safe, they're nice, they're not junky stuff. We have, we have high-end machinery. Our loader, we only have one. When you're paying quarter to half a million dollars for something, you can't afford to. I would love to, but we can't. We have one, we have one operator. We're down people, we have staffing issues like everybody. I'm always hiring, I can't, you know, just like every business. In order for us to mine sand, we use an excavator. We're in a pit, and we, we dig it. So, so that's part of the noise issue we were talking about. It does contain noise, because you're, you're 20, 22 feet down. So we're, we're in a hole. So it's not like the noise travels and hits the hole and it goes up, it doesn't go, you know, to the fence line or, you know, just general noise physics. So we use excavator, we mine the sand. We take that sand that we mine, and we use the loader, and we move it, or screen it, or put in piles to be prepared to sell our customers. That loader, we have to use to load trucks when we're open. So we can't necessarily always be mining when we're loading trucks. If it's a slower day, absolutely, because we want to use our time as wisely as possible. But there is not, with the amount of equipment we have, we can't necessarily be doing both of those tasks at one time. In a perfect world, yes. If I had another couple million dollars, absolutely. But we don't, especially with our limited time. We're not a huge company. We're not some corporate company. It's me, it's my dad, it's a few guys, you know, we, that's what we got. And we're trying to grow. I mean, like everybody, you know, we want to do better, but that's what we have. And to say, well, mine from 8:00 to 4:30 and serve your customers, it's not realistic. You know, we just spent almost $200,000 on a new screen plant, which is a hard hit to take, but it's necessary for our business, and it's necessary in order to get the product that is needed for some of these different infrastructure jobs that are going on. I can't use that screen plant without the loader. I can't load trucks and load the screen plant after we mine. So it's not that we're trying to be unreasonable, it's, it's the way these businesses is conducted and the way that we have to use the equipment. So we don't want to break noise ordinances. So, we don't want to break noise ordinances. We don't want to, we can't mine without lights. They don't have big spotlights or anything. They have, you know, machines have lights, but not, we can't mine at night. It's not going to happen, you know. We're not trying to mine sand at 9:00 p.m. But to be able to come after hours after we close and our last customer leaves and mine for a couple hours, it's like, it's like a kitchen doing their prep work for the next day. You don't have enough cooks in the kitchen to prep all the food that you're going to use the next day during their dinner service. You know, it's the same concept, just in a different environment. So, we need to be able to prepare for our customers. Does that kind of answer how we do things?
So, specifically, what kind of hours are you looking for? From what time to what time?
I would like to serve customers from 7:00 to 6:00.
It's already defined in the.
Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday and 7:00 to 12:00 and on the Saturday, per our original site plan.
It's serving customers, though.
Yes, so that's why we'd like to serve customers. As far as maintenance, I think it's reasonable to have an open discussion with the board here as, and work together. If, I think that's reasonable. I want to be within the noise ordinance. I don't offhand know what Clay Township's ordinance hours are. I'm assuming 9:00 or 10:00 p.m. But we're not going to work till that late, but I think it's reasonable to ask for a couple hours after work.
I guess, I guess maybe I didn't phrase my question right. I wanted to know exactly, every day, what hours are you looking at?
If we had maintenance until.
For work and after maintenance.
If we were allowed to maintain the property till 8:00 p.m., I think that would be wonderful.
What would be the loading of trucks? I think is what.
We would not load any trucks after we close at 6:00 p.m. That, you know, when our business, customer hours, however you want, whatever vocabulary we want to use here, we're not going to serve customers after that time.
Would it be reasonable to ask, do you work with the planner to define all these?
And we have. We did meet with the planner.
You know, because like you got, you run pumps, right? And how long do those pumps run? Is that considered part of?
That's different. No, that's different because that is something that's necessary.
Right.
And has never been an issue.
No.
Since the beginning of, mines have to run pumps 24 hours a day usually. That's never been a discussion point. That's just part of mining. You can't, you can't mine in the water, and that's never been a complaint. We've never had a problem with the pumps. That's just part of.
But it sounds like if it's not defined, you could be forced to shut those off at 6:00.
That's a great point. Yeah, we need to be able to keep our pumps on, but if we could say that we're allowed to maintain our property until 8:00 p.m., I think that would be beautiful. That would be, I think, a great compromise. It's well within the noise ordinance of the township.
But I believe the ordinance in the township states that the mining operations, operating hours would be to 6:00 p.m.
Correct.
So, if you're talking about operating within the ordinance, then 6:00 p.m. would be what, operating within the ordinance. If you were looking to go to 8:00 p.m., you're looking for something over and above.
We're looking for a definition, and that's what we talked to Mr. Kason regarding. And we have talked to Gary about this before, too. And our understanding of operating hours, as we've discussed with these different people in the township, is the time we serve customers. So, we're asking for a definition of maintenance hours.
I see Gary's back there. Gary, do you want to add anything to this since you've now heard this discussion going on for a while? Maybe you could help us here.
Well, he's walking up. You know, you closed the public hearing, and then you let them proceed to make a whole group presentation, and you objected to someone else making a comment. It seems procedurally that this is wrong.
Go ahead, Chris.
With all due respect, this is exactly the way a public hearing works. Public gets a chance to talk, and now the planning commission has their chance to do their investigation, their discussion, and.
That's what we're doing.
Do all new stuff after they made their first presentation.
That's, this is the way it works.
Discovery.
That's okay. That's fine. I asked Gary if he had any input since, say, you're a department head and you've been out there apparently.
Yeah, and know that any time that I've gone by there, either by complaint or my annual inspection, they've always been very receptive to me and have fixed or repaired or taken care of anything that the township has brought to them. I was under the understanding that they wanted to keep the same hours of operation as far as customers coming in, you know, and servicing them. And then after that 4:30 would be a time that they would be able to then be closed to customers, but be able to open up and do their repairs and some prep for the next day and that sort of thing. So, yeah, you want to get as much as you can, I guess, but I don't know if 4:30 would still be a number you'd be willing to work with and then use it till 6:00 to be able to do your maintenance and everything else. It gives you another an hour and a half after everything's closed down to be able to do it. That might be, that might be a viable solution. You know, if we wanted to look at, you know, our gravel trains, small trucks work great on little local deliveries, but they don't work. You know, everyone's hauling with gravel trains. Materials are coming in, materials are going out. It makes more sense to use a gravel train than a straight truck only because you've got less gas being burned, you've got more product coming in on one truck, you've got more wheels on the ground that are better for our roads, and, you know, all Class A roads are all around there. So, the tandem trucks or the gravel trains versus straight trucks, it can handle both of those vehicles.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
What was the thinking initially, probably before your time, when they, to only allow the smaller trucks? Was it noise, concern about the road? What, I mean, it seems like it might make a little more dust, but you're using less trucks to go, you know, one larger one's probably going to make less dust than two small ones.
I would think so, too. But, yeah, I would just be guessing and speculating why. I know back in the day, it was a very local operation that was really servicing this area specifically. I don't think that they were as broad as what they are now, and they wanted to expand. And quite frankly, the quicker they get this thing mined out, and we talk about residential or industrial, this whole area is going to be developed with houses around it. I mean, that's kind of the end game here. So, do we really want, we really probably want to get this thing mined out and done with sooner than later. That way, we can move on to the next phase, which would be housing.
In your opinion, there's no reason to limit the size of the truck, though, in regards to?
I don't know where we should be doing that. You know, that's really weights and measures. That's the commercial enforcement of our state police and county police.
But it's legal once they leave their lot. Everything is legal once they.
Correct. I mean, those trucks are all.
The path to 29 is all legal with a gravel train.
Correct. Once they leave, once they're on the road, you know, they're all legal by weights and measures.
Do you know off the top of your head, or noise ordinance as far as time to time?
Yeah, I don't know. I think if you stay at the 6:00, but I do think it goes to 8:00, 8:00 at night for quiet time.
But they also have a residence on the property, too, right? So.
I believe so.
What if they want to cut their grass, you know? Is that going to, you know, there's a bulldozer?
That's what I'm just asking the typical, because I think it's 7:00 to, it might be 7:00 to 7:00, 7:00 to 8:00. I don't have it memorized, so I don't have my computer with me.
Cut my grass past 8:00 o'clock?
You.
You've got a headline.
Is there any other information you can relate to us since you've been out to the site that you think would be pertinent?
I think they're doing the best they can with what they got. It's a viable business that we have in our community, and we should encourage it.
Is there any suggestions, any that want to work on their vehicles? Is there anything which may, you say, limit them to one side of the site that would, you know, what they're saying, working on their equipment? It might be further away from other residential. Is there any suggestions there that might help?
You know, they've got a garage where they do a lot of their maintenance in. Some of the maintenance has to be done right out in the field where the machine lays. So, it really depends where they are, you know, on the operation. So, I don't think we can do that, and, you know, I think they want to do most of their maintenance right in the garage where they have all their equipment and lighting and everything else. So, I don't think you can say you can't use the garage because it's too close to the houses. You got to go do it out in the middle of the field. I don't know if that.
No, I'm just saying, if it was outside servicing, I mean, if they were right next to, I'm not sure where they're servicing.
No, the closest thing to it would be, that they're operating would be in the garage on the property.
So, if they were in a garage, that can be closed?
Our machines don't fit in the garage.
Okay, so not everything, that's the point. Not everything.
Okay, okay, stop. Sorry, stop, please. Thank you.
But, yeah, case in point, that, yeah, they may want to get it closer to that garage, but it may not fit inside.
Okay, so not everything fits in.
Correct.
So, not all the service can be done inside. Some of it, some of it could.
Once again, most service work on the equipment probably isn't loud, you know, especially if it's down anywhere near or under the pit.
Request for.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
You mean, in our packet, the request? Hold on. Any other board comments, questions? I'm probably going to regret asking this, but we did do a video at 1:00 in the morning.
Um.
Hold on, just a second, just a second.
I'm happy to answer.
Just a second. It does make me wonder what we're doing in regards to that, but maybe that's a totally different subject, but it does, hold on, just, hold on. So, hold on, because we just listened to this whole presentation about we want to stay within these hours and everything else. I'll give you one minute.
I drive a gray pickup truck. That was in my truck, I'm assuming. He drives a red pickup truck. If someone drove through, we weren't bulldozing at 1:00 in the morning. I think that was a little confusion. So.
But the bulldozer.
There was a bulldozer on that video.
Not as one.
No, 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 it's, yeah, yes. And we did clear this tree line. Tom saw the tree line. Steve Kason seen the tree line. We have roads throughout our whole property to access. I may be able to pull it overhead and show you. That is the whole property. It's Oakdale. It is, you can take a vehicle and drive the entire property around, which is important because to maintain it, and then we have to be able to get to it. That is the entire property. You're all welcome to come see it. It's not that there's no trees. The bulldozer runs the entire property pretty often. Today, we're running a bush hog to cut down frint bides to make it so you can see good where the weeds are. We have to access our fence line. So, yes, there was a bulldozer running there, absolutely. There was not a, we were not running trucks in the middle of that. I have two kids.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, the bulldozer does run the fence line, absolutely.
Quick question on trucks. The truck was on your property, though, so would it be safe to assume that it's not secure, your property?
My residence is right there. So, my residential driveway on, so Field has a curves on the third curve.
Okay.
And just like you're in my driveway, you are, can absolutely drive in my driveway, and their house is right next to mine, so you can absolutely drive down my driveway to their house, by their house. Yeah, just like all our houses. I don't have some big barbed wire fence on my residential house by Field Road, which is next to the neighbor's house. First street is, the commercial property fenced in.
Okay, the residential's not fenced in.
That was by my house. I don't, I don't have a gate on my driveway.
Okay.
You know, it looks like a normal house. So, absolutely. And their driveway, their driveway runs next to my driveway. We run right, right parallel to each other, our residential driveways.
Okay.
Yep. And their house is like 10 feet from the property line. I don't know what the, they built in 2019. The sand pit, I think, started in 2009, well before my time being involved, so.
Thank you. Chris, Dean, I have a question. I know this is dis for soil review permit. How does the berm fit into it or does not fit into it? Is that, or is that for the special land use?
What about the berm?
The berm, because I know in the past, there's supposed to be a berm, and the trees were going to stay instead of making a berm and all that good stuff.
Right.
So, I'm just.
Is that a condition of the permit?
It was.
It was.
Then if they're violating a condition of the permit, that's up to the township board to enforce.
Okay. Any more discussion, comments, board members? Karen, any further comments? I guess this, Chris? No?
So, I know you like to drive, you know, access all around the property, but would it be unreasonable to put a berm along the neighborhood there?
It's very expensive and probably impossible. We'd have to take all the trees down.
Okay.
So, your trees probably give you more protection, and their quality, it's protected by the trees. In order to access that with a gravel train and dump dirt and build a mound, it would be impossible to maintain the trees. Yeah, and I think the trees provide a lot more protection personally from dust. Yeah.
Right.
We have pictures that show trees are gone.
Yeah, there's a road, absolutely. Yeah, there's a road, but there's a lot of trees. I'm sorry.
But wasn't that the reason the township board said there was no requirement for a berm because the trees were providing that protection?
Then there's still.
This, oh, wait, just, hold on. Am I?
Yeah, that was part of the.
That was part of.
Yeah. The original site plan agreement.
And we did.
So, I'm sorry. But, Chris, you're saying that's, that's for the township board to address?
If it was part of the permit and the requirement, and they're not meeting it, yes. If it's also part of the special land use and it was on the site plan and it's not there, that would also be an enforcement issue. So, there'd be enforcement on two fronts, one the special land use and one the permit.
I believe it was stated in the meeting that the, I believe the township supervisor had recommended that the berm did not, or recommended that the berm not be put in place because the tree line was there.
Yes.
The tree line has since been compromised. I'm not going to say it's been removed, but it's been compromised. It's not the same tree line that it was agreed to at that time that basically took place of the berm. So, in removing the tree line, the berm may have to go in.
Can I address that?
I just had, I'm talking with Chris.
The other alternative could be additional trees.
That's true.
If the township board, if you guys think the trees are better than the berm, then you could have additional trees planted.
Is it Gary?
I'm sorry.
Is it Gary? Inspection?
Gary's making.
There's quite a few.
Excuse me. No, stop. He's, go ahead, ask your question.
Well, Gary, I'm not sure who the enforcer was. I'm assuming it's Gary, I would assume. If he's been out there, is there anything that, you know, that doesn't follow through? I mean, that is an.
That'd be a question for Gary.
We can look at it, and, you know, if your recommendation is to replant some trees And, you know, if your recommendation is to replant some trees or if it's been compromised to a point where it's no longer buffering the dust and whatnot, then, you know, I know that there was a provision for berm, so we can look into that, maybe on the outside edge of those trees in the opening to install a berm in that location.
I think just to maintain the current requirement, right? Just to inspect and maintain current, what was requested.
If you got a fence line right, then you got to maintain that fence. If you have a berm right there, how do you maintain the fence? So you're going to have to have a pathway between the fence and the berm, which is going to take more trees down.
I'm just going by what the township board did in 2020, and that was part of the requirement at that time. If it's been, I'm going to use Chris's words, compromised, I think it's something that should be looked into. And I'm not saying there's a solution tonight, but it's something that should be looked into. Because that was part of what was approved back in 2020. And again, we're just a recommending body, but as Chris has explained, we're going in two different avenues, enforcement and...
Right.
All the other good stuff.
Right.
Again, we're only dealing with the soil review, ah, sorry, soil review permit. So, go ahead.
Is that just the hours? Is that all we're dealing with?
I think we need to recap real quickly here because we've thrown out a lot of numbers. And anybody, cut me as we go here. Right now, it appears that the applicant is looking for the hours of operation Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday from 7:00 till noon, no Sunday. And I realize the paperwork we have in front of us may say something different, but I'm going by what's been verbally said today, okay? Or this evening. It was unasked. Grading of roads, fence maintenance, tree, grass, fixing equipment. I believe the applicant has requested that they be allowed to do that until 8:00 p.m. I'm going to say it was Monday through Friday. I don't know if we actually had a date, days a week, but I think it's Monday through Friday.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So I believe at this particular point, that pertains only to the soil review, review permit. Chris, am I right?
Yes, they also asked for gravel trains.
Oh, thank you. Forgot about the gravel trains.
But they also asked to do mining during their maintenance hours.
Correct.
That's true.
Yeah, it's basically just the loading of trucks.
So what's the difference?
There'd be no traffic.
Right.
No, yeah, no traffic, no coming in. And we'd be in a different area. We wouldn't have cars in and out going through the neighborhood, which I, trucks going in and out through, through Route Street.
So it'd be limited to your site?
Yeah, we wouldn't be leaving our site, so we wouldn't be imposing on the neighborhood with any of our customers after our operating time is, which I believe was a big complaint, was the gravel trains. So that way, there wouldn't be any gravel trains after 6:00 p.m. in the neighborhood for us.
We're not talking about anybody else but you. Okay, I'm going to go over this one more time because I think we've gone around. Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 6:00. Saturday, 7:00 to noon, no Sundays. That's for the general operation of the business, okay? Jump in here anytime, Chris or Karen. I'm going to look towards you guys for help on this. Grade roads, fence, fence maintenance, trees, grass, fixing equipment.
Lawn maintenance.
Lawn maintenance to 8:00 p.m. And I'm going to back up because I messed up again. Gravel trains also is a request for the operational hours of 7:00 to 6:00 and Saturday, 7:00 to noon. Okay. The mining after hours, that I'm not quite clear on. What do we...
We would like to mine during the maintenance hours. We would like that to be something we can do during the maintenance hours.
Which would not be Sunday, it'd be Monday through Friday until 8:00 p.m.
Correct. We would like some hours on Saturday when we close at noon. We would like some hours on Saturday to maintain also, I mean, not till 8:00 p.m. because we already, we close at noon, so we close, so I don't know, until 5:00 on Saturday.
No, okay. I'm looking at if you close at 6:00 Monday through Friday, you only want to go to 8:00, you close at noon on Saturday.
Two.
Two hours more? I mean, I know, I know what you're requesting, but...
We're having a discussion and your recommendation is your recommendation, but of course, I would love as many hours as we can, so I'm going to request until 5:00.
Gotcha.
That is, that's what I'm going to...
Well, it's just a realistic thing because you're a regular workday.
Yeah, Saturday is a regular workday for us. It's not a weekend. Our guys like overtime, we like overtime. We're kind of seasonal, so it's important we can do as much as we can.
It's true.
When we can.
Okay. Do the members up here understand what they're asking for at this particular point in regards to what they now have?
So the general maintenance will be from 4:30 to 6:00?
4:30 is out, no. General maintenance would be, well, they can do general maintenance, I guess, anytime, but for sure, general maintenance is 6:00 to 8:00. Monday through Friday. Saturday, they're asking general maintenance from noon till 5:00 is what they're asking.
That's what we're asking.
That's what they're asking. I'm not saying you're getting, I'm just saying you're asking. So, there's nothing with 4:30 more. 4:30 is outdoor. Okay?
Just wanted to make the point.
Right, so it's loading of trucks till 4:30, then maintenance till 6:00 or...
And that's what, I mean, right now it's...
Or 6:00 and 8:00, I'm sorry.
Yeah, forget 4:30.
Yeah, forget 4:30.
I'm sorry?
Never mind.
I'm talking to him somehow.
Okay, Tom, you're talking to yourself. The old, or the now in existence soil permit, maybe that's where the 4:30 is coming from. The hours are between 8:00 and 4:30 and 8:00 till noon on Saturday. That's where that came from. That is no longer what the now applicant is asking for. Okay? Not to say we can't do that, but it's just where we're at at this point, so. Chris, do you have any more in point now that you've listened to me say this a few times? Am I...
I think you've got it exactly right, based on the presentation of the applicant today. That's exactly what they're asking for.
And taken into consideration the totality of everybody who has spoken here, and unfortunately the person I didn't, because we're outside of that scope, but Karen? Any further comments?
Nothing more to add.
Okay. Board members? Any more comments, discussion, thoughts?
I have a question.
You have a question? Go for it.
I know we just talked about the berm, and I know you gave us an answer, but all this other stuff's been going on. Are we even allowed to make any, make any of that a part of our recommendation? Or is that something that the public has to go to township board and lodge their complaint about?
Based on what you've heard tonight, you can certainly make a recommendation to the township board with respect to that item.
Okay. I like that question. And again, we're just a recommending body. They can get to the township board and they can just make a whole different decision.
They did address that in their motion.
They did address that in their motion back in 2020.
I remember that quite well.
So do I. And actually, Chris was very kind and transcribed those sections of that meeting for us, and it was very clear, because we were all zooming back then. It was lots of fun, so.
I do not miss those days.
I don't either. All right, so at this particular point, does anybody have a motion? Any further discussion? That silence.
Lot to put together here.
I'm going to make a motion.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, the biggest concern's been enforcement. What they're complaining about is...
But that's not...
Dust after hours, all of that, you know, but that doesn't really enter into our decision here at this point because we don't enforce.
We don't.
As long as it's being enforced.
It should work.
It'd be nice, but that's not our call.
Right.
It'd make it a lot easier if we could...
It would make it a lot easier, yes.
But that's not our job.
They didn't, Chris, will tell us, that's not our job.
Got to stay in our lane.
Stay in our lane, yes.
We'll leave that to the code enforcer, okay?
Yes.
Perfectly fine, and I would be Roman, right? Okay, everybody's feverishly writing, probably trying to put a motion together, so we'll just take a moment and see if we can, unless somebody's ready to go.
I'm ready. I'll make a motion to recommend that township board renews the permit for Algonax sand and gravel with the following changes. Extend operating hours Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 6:00 to encompass all operations and maintenance, and Saturday, 7:00 to 12:00. Also, the use of gravel trains. And then it also recommend that the board reviews the tree line and berm situation.
Do you want to...
Did you address mining 8:00 to 8:00 p.m. for mining?
Yep. My motion was to extend hours Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 6:00 to encompass all operations and Saturday, 7:00 to 12:00.
Nothing about 6:00 to 8:00 or 12:00 to 5:00?
No.
Okay, stay to one more time. I got a lot of notes going here.
Yep. Motion to recommend that the township board renews the permit for Algonax sand and gravel with the following changes. Extend operating hours Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 6:00. Saturday, 7:00 to 12:00. Allow the use of gravel trains. And also recommend reviewing the tree line and berm issue.
Okay. Any support?
Do we need to specify where that tree line and berm issue is?
If we just, basically the original site plan.
I would think a visual inspection would probably, Gary would know. I'm guessing?
I'm in to be...
My guess is they know exactly where it is.
That would be my guess, and my notion guess, but...
See, I like specifics, but my guess on this issue is they know exactly where it is.
Okay.
You trying to find what?
Can we amend that? I'd go along with it, but I'd amend it to 8:00 p.m. for maintenance? And 2:00 p.m. on Saturdays?
It's his motion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to amend it now. We're already, we're extending it two and a half hours per day with that, with that motion and then sticking within the ordinance as well, so that's kind of why I made that motion.
Well, I would, yeah, I would hold the loading of trucks till 6:00.
How about just mining until 8:00 p.m.? Mining only until 8:00 p.m.
I think things just get a little bit hairy if you pinpoint one or two things, so I'm going to keep my motion as stands, all right?
So you know what his motion is, so then I would ask, is there any support for that motion?
Can we ask you to amend that motion again?
Sure.
Can I ask if you would amend your motion to include the specific area to be addressed by the township board as to the berm and tree line to the property nearest 903, 903 to Field Road?
Sure, I would do that.
Can you put 8:00 p.m. in there?
I think Chris is saying, probably know at this point, that's his motion.
Basically, saying the whole operation be done, do everything encompassed, and it's not a bad idea, till 6:00 and shut her down. That's grading the roads, everything. And then they can decide if they want to load, they can cut that back to 5:00 if they want or something like that. It's up to them to set the hours to whatever they would, would work for them.
It is.
All right, at this point in time, I'll second that motion.
Okay. So I am going to ask Sue to reread the motion. I knew she's going to... But our attorney was saying this is really important.
I can...
Or Chris will restate it and we can make sure you have it.
I'd like to see a different compromise.
You want Chris to restate it?
I can read it if you want me to.
Include a specific area.
Request the township board to review the requirement of a berm and a tree line at the property closest to 903 to Field Road.
To recommend to the township board, renew the permit with the following changes. Extend the operation from Monday, Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 6:00 p.m. to encompass all operations and Saturday, 7:00 to 12:00. Allow the use of gravel trains. Recommend the township board review the required berm and tree line at the property closest to 903 to Field Road.
Correct.
Let me ask Chris a question. We're silent on Sunday. Should we make sure the motion states clearly what's to happen or not happen on a Sunday? Or are we okay with this?
This is clear.
Okay.
It's all operations Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 6:00 and Saturday, 7:00 to 12:00.
And we have gravel trains in that one?
Yes.
So we have a motion, we have supports. Everybody understand the motion? All right, roll call, please, Robert.
Deborah Addy is absent. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Dagie?
Yes.
Chris Hultunin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Muesling?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweikart?
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for showing up and expressing your viewpoints, and the hard work has gone into this. We will continue on with our agenda for the night, which was item number eight, which would be planning consultant's report. Karen?
I have nothing further to say tonight.
Thank you, appreciate that. Item number nine is ZBA representative's report, and our new representative at this point is Christopher Dagie, until further notice. How's that?
Until further notice.
Until, yes.
Temporary, permanent, maybe.
Wherever.
Temporary, permanent, we're not sure. Debbie Addy is dealing with family issues, so we're just, we needed somebody to step in and...
Thank you, Chris.
I was going to say, thank you so much, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Now, that was supposed to be voted on as to whether I was going to be the representative.
You know what? We've had, we've gone back and forth, but if you want to feel really comfortable about this, okay.
No, I don't care, I just thought that was...
Nominations for ZBA representative?
I'll nominate Chris Dagie.
A second here.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're not even asking.
It's official now.
You're official.
You asked for it.
You're done.
I'm done.
So she's going to give us our first report.
Yeah, now if I can just be ready for it, that would be better, huh?
No pressure here, come on.
All right, hang on. All right, we had on 5702 South Channel, it was in regards to a height variance and a second floor variance for a storage, a garage, storage above, and that was approved. There was, on a odd shaped lot on Audubon, a approval for, or attempting to get approval for variance for the rear setback and 60-foot straight rear setback, which that was granted. And then on 7267 Dyke, they were requesting a 16-foot variance for the front yard and for an addition, and that was granted.
Thank you.
And there was no other new business.
I hope you enjoyed your first ZBA meeting.
I did.
Good.
Not as much fun as here, but it was close.
Well, they have some room to improve that. You can talk about that next time, see what you say. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Item number 10 is board representative report, which would be Mark.
Okay, I won't have anything to say concerning the planning commission. However, we have the Algonax Pickle Tournament going on.
We do.
Play township in Algonac area specifically, so anybody come out and enjoy yourself. It starts tonight, or Thursday night at the Beer Tent, and then continue on through Sunday.
Are you buying?
Who's the band?
We're all buying.
Everybody show up.
We're all coming.
Bring your card with you here.
Do the trustees have a five? Was there something with the park? Didn't that, so the park, didn't that get come up this month? The proposed park?
Oh, yet, we're waiting for things, we're trying to give us an update on it, but there's some issues still that we're trying to work through.
So nothing really new?
You're looking probably a year and a half down the road.
Okay.
I see the pier's looking pretty nice.
Oh, the pier's looking real nice, yeah.
Yep.
And the bathroom, the whole shot.
All right, thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Item number 11 is chairperson's report. I see in front of us is the special approval land use site plan procedures. I think maybe Chris, at the last meeting, you might have requested, or we're curious how everything processes through. Cindy Babish, Cindy Valentine, Steve Cass and I, and is it Amber that's in that department also? Right. Right. Matt kind of went through the whole process and this is the result of, I do not review this, Steve's not here tonight, he's on vacation, I guess. Lucky guy. But I'm going to presume that he went through this and that's why it's now in front of us to give clarification of how things proceed through the department. I know Steve was also looking to...
Some big letters too, so I think he really is serious about it.
Big letters. Or we're just getting older and you think we can read it?
Appreciate that too.
Well, it's probably for all of us, so, and he was going to work with Cindy and Amber to maybe some of the forms, there's, it's kind of generic form on some of it that maybe we don't need certain things filled out, so that's a work in progress for everybody to let, let you know that. I very much appreciate everybody's patience and courtesy during this meeting. I know it's not easy, but I do appreciate all your hard work, everybody here. So I'll go on to item number 12, which is planning commission member comments.
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. Make it be a safe and happy one.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Actually, Karen and Chris, if I didn't mention it in particular, thank you so much for being here tonight. You're very, very helpful in this matter, so.
Thank you.
And Gary.
You come to every meeting.
You always hide in the back. I saw you. I found you, sorry, Gary. I now, I now know where to look. You might want to switch up where you sit, so.
The monarch butterfly numbers are down and it's directly related to food. And if you have milkweed growing on your property, let it stand.
Okay.
It's the only thing they eat.
They do, you're right.
The monarchs?
The monarchs, yes.
Now you tell me. Someone was giving away milk seeds here in the township at the building, I think. Had some at the, I don't know, here in the building, maybe administrative office, someone giving away milk, milk seed, milkweed.
Milkweed?
Yeah.
I got a bunch of it, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Give me some seeds.
All right, you'll regret it and I'll get you some.
Make sure it's milkweed.
It is.
I can have some of the ones that are so lovingly planted right at my front porch.
You'll walk it out in the DNR, you'll see all the milkweed and the butterflies, so. All right, item number 13 is public comments. Anybody in the public wishing to come forward, make a comment, you may do so. Just state your name, you have to come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name's Brian Klingenberg, 9032 Field Road. I just wanted to thank everybody for their time. Especially want to thank Christine for addressing the berm and the tree line because we only have leaves on those trees four months out of the year and the rest of the time, it's total see-through, so just thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Any other public, oh, does he clarify? Are you classified as the public now at this point?
At this point, he would be.
Oh, right. The two attorneys agree that I guess I would have to go with it. Hold on, we have that in, right? We're already...
Right. Couple of things. If you pass on to the township board, those members are free to come to my client's house at 9032 to observe the way the tree line is now because that's the best viewpoint of it. So they're at 9032 Field Street. Can I get a copy of your work in progress guideline for special land use?
Alls we have is, well, it's work in progress.
You have to go through the proper channels.
Yeah, you can go...
Talk to our lawyer.